Good.
Yes, sir.
You're awesome. Have a good meeting.
Thanks. Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, May ninth, twenty twenty four, sixth floor planning board. We'll need a select board here in tonight. Uh, it's for yellow public is welcome to a plan via Zoom. And also will be on the chief for tomorrow. Here is a post to January, there are second. I'm clear. First, your public hearing, public meeting, six thirty, site plan review with stormwater permit. For common driveway, Laurelwood lots one and two, or get the luck and come with me. Good evening, gentlemen, how I'm today.
Good evening. Well, thank you. So Karen sent us the consulting what in the other hand, and I think Dave got it right. Discuss it in discussing the dance. I've already told them, uh, the case they would get additional. Some of, uh, post case. And we understand this meeting and team, team because talk about logistics of getting this in. Hopefully getting this finished, loaded and and complete the next thing. So. I know Karen is saying that yourself and the board have forward, but I also know. Dave, if you have some clarifications or questions or things going on, or if you want to.
Sure.
How do you want to?
Um, so yes, we did receive this morning, the comments from T E C. Um, we have, we started addressing most of the comments. Um, one of the changes that we did from the previous plan that we presented to the board was, um. The orifice, uh, three quarter inch orifice was a concern. Uh, we changed that to a two inch pipe, which T C had concerns on maintenance. Um, of the changes that are that we are proposing for the next emission, we are increasing the size of the pipes. To minimize the amount of maintenance that needs to be done on those. Also, we would still be going with a small orifice, just kind of one inch orifice. And I do, uh, realize it's a bit of a point of contention. However, I do have to make clear that. At the point where we will have that orifice, no solids will be in the system at that point. The system consists of a five foot section of a sand filter, which has been modified since last time. Uh, due to the concerns freezing. So we placed, uh, the sand filter below the frost line. Um, that gave us a little bit more of of, uh, storage area in there. So we could remove a couple of, uh. Of the dry wells, which was also a concern, the amount of dry wells in the system. Um, but back to the orifice, the orifice will have its own, um, dedicated, uh, encasement. For maintenance. We will also be adding alarms, high level water alarms to the, to the detention systems. If water gets to a level beyond than what is proposed, an alarm will sound. Uh, indicating the homeowners that they need to, uh, get maintenance in, uh, in there. So. Um, we are making it easier for the maintenance of the system to take place. That is, uh, pretty much the gist where we're at right now. Um, another thing we did add since last, the last hearing, we added a line of screen trees between the lots. Uh, we are proposing, uh, six to seven foot white pines, um, spaced at fifteen feet. Uh, from each other, and that will separate lots one and two, also lots two and three.
You said white pines?
Yes.
I thought it was some discussion about white pines. Well, I could have his that. I, I mean, I'm going to my comment on the screening is that I, I don't want one solid species to be in the screen. Because if there's ever a light, the whole screen could be wiped out. It should be, it should be a variety of species at, at that height. I mean, um, just. For insurance that, you know, lights happen all the time. I'm getting a beach light right now. And it's, you know, I think that you could be creative with white pines and, you know, red cedars and some spruces to get. To, to come up with the same effect that you have. Um. As far as the, I'm, I'm still concerned about the one inch outlet, uh, one inch orifice. But I'd like to let, um, you know. I mean, our, our engineer was recommending an outlet control structure for discharge and maintenance and flow. You know, I mean, I don't, um, some of the other lots in this one, you have the nine plus, um, things. But I'd like to let our engineer, um, you know, to share some of his recommendations with you. Is he here?
Yeah.
Yes, Alice.
Hi guys, can, can you hear and see me?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. What I didn't know was that.
It's on the last page, number three.
Oh.
Hold on.
No, that's the truth.
So Alice, I, I'd kind of like you to go over your recommendations.
Sure. Yeah, glad to. Um, so we, in response to the request. To review the maintenance concerns with the three quarter inch orifice, uh, the applicant, uh, had swapped. The, uh, orifice out. Uh, in an effort to respond to those concerns, um, and to, and, uh, uh, Mr., uh. Um, Adia, is it? Uh, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but, uh, you're using a smaller pipe size to, uh. To restrict flow to meet your peak flow requirements as your outlet control structure. To act as an outlet control for your larger detention structures there. So the, um, is that, that's correct, right?
Uh, yes. However, we did a change, uh, because of the concerns of the, um. The slope of the pipe itself. Um, we have very, uh, shallow slopes. So what we did is that we increased the size of those pipes. To comply with the flow, uh, requirements, and they flow up to the hundred year storm now. Now we're using instead of a two inch pipe all the way at eight feet deep, which is where that pipe would have been. Um, we're using now a ten inch pipe, um, that will run that span. Um, we also added the, uh, perforated pipes lengthwise across the. Across the store, the subsurface systems to pick up that, uh, lower, uh, lower elevation. Waters, um, and we did, uh, eliminate the need for the screen, which was also a concern. Um, and now we would have a more robust system.
So Mr. Pedia is explaining that, um, that he, a, a concern that we brought up, uh, several times was. The, how the pipe entered the, the, uh, structure for discharging those large detention basins. There's, there was a small, which was once a four inch, and then it went to a two inch pipe. Uh, entering the system and just, uh, collecting water from the stone section below the concrete galley system. Uh, we typically see, um, discharges when we're trying to, to take flow from stone itself. We typically see, um, a network of underdrain versus just a single, uh, outlet. A single pipe connecting or just, just exposed in the pipe bed into this stone section itself. So when you swap it over to an underdrain, you have the advantage of providing a, uh, a filter sock. Around that pipe, which, which further protects the system from being clogged. Um, with, with any solids and, and, uh, uh, fines that may try and work its way into the drainage system. And the other benefit of doing the system that, uh, Mr. Pedia is switching over to, and I believe is next submission, it sounds like. Is you have the advantage of adding clean outs throughout this section, which gives the homeowner. Quite a bit more access points to this outlet structure, which is the most sensitive. Um, most sensitive portion of this stormwater system. So with these changes, it seems like he's going, he's working to address, um, our major concerns with. Um, the, uh, the susceptibility of, of clogging and, and the difficulty of maintaining these structures. Um, so it's, it sounds like he's headed in what we would feel to be the right direction with that regard.
Does, does that address the management of peak flow?
So without, without seeing what he's proposing, I'm going to have to let him speak to that. But our recommendation was to increase the, the pipe size as not to manage flow. But as to do, as to be a, a, a stormwater conveyance that is easily, easily maintained versus a two inch pipe. So with that, we would typically see an outlet control structure, which would have a smaller orifice that would manage. The, uh, peak flows, which at that point, then it's, then it's in a single location. So that it's easily accessible to the homeowner, inspector, whoever it may be to do the inspection. And it just a, a, a cover that could pop off and you could just see it, the, the sensitive area. Versus just having a prolonged hundreds of feet of two, two inch pipe that would have to be managed and inspected.
And the, the outlet control structure you're talking about is a concrete? Is it?
It, it's typically, it typically is concrete. Uh, there's ways, there's ways to, uh, work with. Um, the A D S company that, uh, is, uh, doing these nylon plaster structures that they can do if they want to do an nylon plaster. There's, there's many options with that. There's, uh, um, but I don't know what they're proposing, uh, because it's, it hasn't been submitted yet. Which is what they're, they're working off our recommendation.
We haven't seen on the plan.
No, these are addressing comments that we received.
He's just talking about where they're going.
And when you, and when you have concrete or diaplast, we.
At the end of, uh, of this particular, uh, orifice, it would be a concrete structure. Uh, nylon plastic are plastic and we want to provide as much protection as possible at that.
Anything else for successors?
Um, well, we have several outstanding items. Um, many of them are, are minor. Uh, more, more so just kind of dotting the i's and crossing the t's. There was a concern about access for, for these, um, outlet control structures, and it sounds like they're addressing it. So in, in that similar vein, um, otherwise, I just wanted to stress that. Um, the details, the detail comments, uh, Mr. Padilla, that, that they're just looking for a little more, a little more clarification on some of those. I hope those are self-explanatory, those comments. Um, if you have any questions now, certainly is the time. Um, otherwise, otherwise they're, uh. I believe relatively minor comments that could be easily addressed.
Oh, yeah, I still have a couple more comments. Um. Just, I, I think you need to go back into the O and M plan and look at the maintenance cost. I, I think that a thousand dollars per year sounds for the number of inspections sounds unrealistic. People, we, we've had people complain to us before that the numbers in the O and M aren't realistic. And they can't even get an engineer to come up with a site for, you know, so that, that's why I bring that up. And just make sure the plan and the O and M match. So, I mean, there's a number of places that it says monthly. Well, the O and M, I don't see that the O and M says monthly.
Yeah, to that, to that comment, the, the monthly, uh, inspections on the pipes was due to the small size of the pipes. Um, so now that we have bigger pipes that are less prone to clogging. Um, and plus we're adding the high water elevation alarm. Um, there, there's no need for monthly inspections at this point.
Um, no, Alex has got the rest and I, my other comment was good on the landscaping. Um, you know, we'll anticipate another plan set and hopefully we will be ready. You know, we can get the comments and peer reviews done and hopefully we'll be ready for a decision on June thirteenth. But any questions you have, please.
I guess just about the water that they're afraid it's going to attract and seed as we, we adjust it now.
Um, we will, um, we will put in the O and M, uh. Or pest control around that area. Um, that wet swale, the way it works is with a permanent pool. So mosquito control, it will be part of the O and M within the wet swale sections.
How deep do we want to be?
Not too deep. Uh, we're talking six inches.
Okay. I mean, I can see small children playing in it. No, you don't get more than, I'm just getting actual. Remember what you mean.
Um, just to follow up on the sand filter, because you were talking about that last night. You say, you know, the old sand filter is now below the cross line. So it's like four feet below here.
Partially. The, the, there is still a, a part of the filter media that is above the, uh, the. Free fly the frost line. Thank you. Um, but the, the pipe itself, the conveyance, now that is still under, is now under the frost line. So we do anticipate that with, uh, following the, uh, operations and maintenance plan in terms of. Um, not putting, uh, keeping the snow outside of, of those areas, uh, where we have them located in the plant. Should, should be enough to work during winter times.
Does it matter that, and one of these, we're all going to get upset plans, but you have one of these chambers. That looks like it's practically against what the dwelling on what true. Does that matter that it's right there?
It's six feet away. Yes. The requirement to have it ten feet away is if we're infiltrating. But since we're not infiltrating, um, we could put it close, closer.
Closer. And will it be delineated so that the homeowner knows where it is? So he doesn't start digging into it?
Should. We could make some markers and make, make that note, but the homeowner will have these plans and will have an operations. Uh, maintenance manager that will have all that.
Well, let's just talk about the presentation. So we can talk about.
Um, what is this high water alarm upon this sound?
Um, it's the same alarm they use in septic pumps. Um, it's just an alarm with, uh, buoy, uh, with a floating device. Once that floating device hits a certain elevation, it triggers the alarm that, uh, we would have a panel inside each home.
And you should get, I have one at my house. It allows you to sit ready. It's a very, it's the speed, the, the.
Okay.
And it's a flash alarm.
Yes, there is a flash alarm.
So, so I have one. It's not invasive at all.
Okay.
Is there a local alarm right there? It's light or something?
Yes, usually there is a panel with a stroke on top of it that just flashes along with the annoying beats.
And if anybody pays attention, they'll talk. Anything else we? I'm going to say.
Did you have the people online and another night go to comment online?
Oh, if anybody would like to participate, raise your hand and Sharon will be happy to let you in.
Oh.
Oh. All right. Okay. I move to continue the public meeting for the site plan administrative review of common driveway and stormwater permit at Laurelwood lots one and two. Numbers one and number three to June thirteenth, twenty twenty four at seven P M. And to continue the time for action, the final of the town prayer until June twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. All the papers. Thank you. We'll see you, Stephen. See you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks.
Picture will be that. Anybody who will forget us. Yeah, and seven o'clock. Um, I move to a place with meeting minutes from April twenty to twenty twenty four. Second. Uh, Alex, is that here?
No, I'm in favor.
Well, I favor.
I am, um, accounting. I move to approve a requisition of forty six dollars, sixty cents to Janet Holtons from N R U of Co. of the park.
Second, I'm favor.
Ayes.
Never got to update the N B T A community. It's again, we don't. All right. So, um, we are in the process of responding to the letter that, um, E O H L C sent. For our pre-adoption review. Um, we hope to get the letter out sometime this month. Um, town council are. I took a stab at some of the things, um, our, our consultant took a stab and that was with town council and T A. And so, um, we hope to get it out soon. And we, the processes, we want to do a letter and if we try, I asked for a phone call. We discuss some of the items because some of the items are just, um. We had a meeting with town council this week and they agree, it's not in, it's not in the guidelines. And some of them are just ludicrous.
So I was thinking that we went to great lengths to have any overlay districts voided, basically, like a watershed protection district. And salt marsh and Thailand.
Right. But I mean, so you think about the salt marsh, you can't even fill, you can't fill in the tidal has, you can't go in a salt marsh.
Right.
So it makes no, it makes no sense.
We weren't counting any development.
We weren't counting any development there either.
I'm more concerned about the watershed protection district. Because it's, it's sort of like ruling out anything in that district. So you have to create it somewhere.
Um, so we're looking into how much actual overlap, how much excluded land area and how much overlap is the water resource protection. But there, our consultants looking into that right now. We, um, we do not want to change any requirements in the water resource protection. And so, um, we are, we're looking into that. And, you know, you can't develop a flood plain either. You can't have new housing in the flood plain. So that's kind of a ridiculous comment.
And we didn't count any, in those comparators as our apps, basically.
Right. We have a lot of excluded area. I mean, some of, some definitely no tidal lands was counted.
Yeah.
Um, we're, we're looking, we're relooking at that right now. Our consultant did run the numbers. They suggested using one point six parking, although that was not in any of the guidelines. Or guidance that they were given, and we lose one unit. So.
What were we using?
One point five. I don't know.
The one I, the one that is baffling to me is they sort of had this thing about. Review the standards and make sure they're objective and non-discretionary. I mean, did they flag something that they thought was not objective?
Um.
Or non-discretionary? It seemed like a kind of a weird comment.
Town council thinks everything is, is fine. I mean, town council had a conversation previously. Uh, with Margaret Hurley of the A G M L U and they talked about, um. They talked about standards of review being subjective and then they agreed. But the M and L U already approved the language. So, you know, that's kind of. A loss there. I mean, and, um. On, we can have design review. It's not, the planning board is one, it's not. You know, the design review committee is making, they just make recommendations to you. So the planning board makes the actual decision and town council firmly believes there's case law. That allows under seven seventy point eight D to have a denial in extreme circumstances. So they don't want to take any of those things out. Um. You know, when we had our phone conversation with E O H L C, you know, one of the things they talked about with. You know, the, um, the setback step back was, well, can, are you sure you can really get a four story building? Well, you can get something on the site. Maybe it's not going to be a four story building, but it's going to be something. That, and so you're not.
But the asset right.
Yeah, exactly. So that's why we're, we're going to be responding to each one of these things. And the lot with stuff, we use the existing parcels. How can we anticipate something? When, in the future, we use the existing parcels and we don't, you know, in this area, it's not likely. We're going to see any new parcels created.
Right, right.
And so they, these are, these are the arguments that are going to be going into the letter. I mean, it's, and then, you know, the access in front of requirements, you know, that's, it's, I mean. It's not in the guidelines. Ninety nine, we're, we're going to apply ninety nine percent of our parcels are legally developed. And then, you know, I did point out that the planning board does have the provision to grant a waiver. But, you know, um, in, in cases from, from the guidelines and so, you know.
But they wouldn't consider that an asset right in a waiver.
I would think that would be, because it's, it's not a special permit.
Yeah, but it's not asset right. It requires the planning, planning board says no.
Right, but it's, I mean.
I can see you are not inspection.
So it's, it's our town council's reviewing the letter right now. Hope to get it out in the next, um, few weeks.
Yeah.
Um, town council would like us to file soon as we hear, let's get this letter in. Let's try to get them on the phone and then town council wants us to actually file for full compliance.
Yeah, force them to get.
Force them to make a decision, um, so that, you know, if we have to do something at a fall town meeting, we know. Um, which I hopefully we don't, but just force them to make a decision. So we know where we stand. I mean, if you've been keeping up with the news this week, many of the towns around us are just saying no. But my directive was given that situant wants to grant money. We, we. We get a lot of money from grants for all different things. And so we were so close anyways that we should comply.
And I think that's the issue is the, what is effectively a tweak.
Right.
You know, to comply, which is great, but, uh, the only one that worried me is the water resource protection district. Language is whether that would carve out some of the quad thirty nine.
We're looking at, we're looking at that and, um, you know, we're, we're not going to change, we're not going to, we're not going to. Check, make any changes to the water resource.
No, you shouldn't. You shouldn't.
Karen. A number of towns, cities in town have, are as far along as we are. How many of them have actually got the letter that they comply? Three, uh. But last, last I knew it was three. Just three. There's a number of communities, I think we counted last week when I got an email and it was like forty one. Who've already passed zoning to comply. But that doesn't mean that, that they've complied yet. Um, there was a whole list of towns that had passed zoning. Why do they need to make it so difficult? Well, they have to stay. They get to help us. That's what, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to find out. It seems. It, it seems like they, every time we get a step closer, they throw roadblocks. And so I'm also, you know, putting in the letter that, you know, we, we are. We're still want to pursue the mandatory mixed use district or N B T V. So, um, the green bush one and because, you know, we, we may, we may need that. So, um the Green Bush one, and because, you know, we, we may, we may need that. And so we, we're pushing. They said that they might consider reconsider when we go into, you know, the final model, but, you know. It would be slow if they came, but I'm sure you could take a little while, you'd show me where everything is.
Same old as the twenties.
So we're working on things and um so, you know, I would say hopefully if we can. Get this letter out in the next two weeks and then hopefully get a phone call, we would like to get this. I, I'm shooting for end of June to, to get our full compliance. Submitted, so we know where we stand and they have ninety days, uh I believe, to, to react.
What, what towns have passed? What are the three towns?
Salem.
Salem. Yeah, Salem, Lexington and.
Arlington. I have the list in the office of, of the.
Brooklyn, is it Brooklyn?
And Brooklyn's inviting me, I thought.
That Brooklyn didn't, isn't in compliance, but they, they haven't passed zoning. I, the list is in the office about which towns have passed zoning, we've just been following towns this week that haven't passed. You know, all our surrounding towns haven't passed zoning.
So we are trying to, to go down to the block.
Alright.
So we should. I think maybe they took this.
Cohasset hasn't, uh you know, I don't know if they've had their town meeting, you know, not yet, so they, you know, I'm not.
They don't have much, oh, they have that front, I'm sorry, they have the front side of.
And the N D A's there.
No, no, I know, but they, I was gonna say on the total, not on the three A side, but there's a lot of homes there, like.
And if, uh, take a spot on, on the quarter of Florida, so you know, the Robbins garages. They, that they, you definitely have a quarter of a house there, the, the place they go. So.
So we checked this week, hang them, hang them past. Um but, you know, Marshville did it, Roewell did it, Hanover did it, Cohasset hasn't voted and, you know. Our directive bothers us.
Seems like an organization is trying to get more hazard, they're putting an awful lot of road, roadblocks away, people who are driving.
Right, yeah, that, that's, that, yes.
Maybe, maybe they're not that interested.
And also to the cut down percentage for affordability here.
Right.
Which makes, that makes no sense to me.
Right.
What are you talking about housing, you are not talking about.
Yeah, I would have started with that.
So that's, that's the big difference is housing is not, is, people only can play that unless to give the futures.
But even so.
Yeah.
Even so.
But I mean, so I would, I, you know, yes, I don't think it's worth it to do a financial feasibility analysis. To get fifteen percent, you know, to, and with, still they need special permit, they have to do the twenty percent. I mean, so it's, you know.
So which way, which way do you want it like that? Anything else on the N B T A?
No, we're just out working hard.
Uh so we need some reports.
Um nothing much from the bike committee, they have a big event coming up, their first big event, the slow roll, that was pumped. So if I do that, we have a couple of weekends, but they've been focused on that, I guess. They're getting some racks installed and doing spots in town, near the beaches and downtown, so they, they've done a lot for.
Do you want to get some?
Um, yeah.
Anybody else? Ch- conservation in, in zoning, it's uh. Interesting to watch, zoning especially for. If you're watching, I think. Um, different mindset, I think is coming down like.
Is there anything significant in front of me? For the.
Next, next, the next meeting, they have one sixty-four Turner and it's that other one.
Is the, is that just the area?
It's the yacht club, right, it's the yacht club.
The yacht club is on.
The yacht club is on the. And what's one sixty-four?
What, what do you do with the yacht?
They want to have tennis, um tennis, they want it to.
They have tennis.
Experience. That club, the club, the club area, the pro shop or something.
Oh.
That's what we, so, you know, but, so I don't know, it's a yacht club.
They're, they're not taking more area.
They're taking away essentially all the rest of the grass.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So we watch for the interest.
Well, there's only grass in one area.
I think that's what they're trying to take away. I didn't look at the plan.
That doesn't make any sense, because that's what it depends.
I didn't look at the plans, I, just somebody came in to talk to us about it and. Uh but I know that's on the meeting next week with the C B A.
Because there's no forty Bs.
No, there is the project eligibility application that we have in and, um. I have written comments to the T A, you know, to say that they need to look at all these things, like to denture the site. Um there's a faster, more wetlands that the town says are out there than what they say. You know, you have to look at traffic, you have to do traffic study, you should do soil testing, um you know, they're not taking. They're not getting rid of dependence on the automobile, all those things that I put in. Our letters and I did put that, um we did. We had ninety-two units for sub-size housing inventory last year and that, you know, most of them, um. You know, we had to change our inclusionary zoning, we were at fifteen, we had to go down to ten percent to comply with the B T A. And we have four new projects approved that have fifteen to twenty percent affordable housing. So we have been making headways in the affordable housing department. But the process, I think Jim got a two-week extension, so. Our comments were all in him this week and so he, then the, he'll write a letter and the chair and the select board will sign it. Then mass housing has ninety Bs to determine if they're going to grant eligibility and. And what they want in, you know, what the applicant might have to look at. And if, if everything's a go, then they're eligible to file for a forty B.
Which project is this?
The, um, the village of that first parish.
Oh, yeah. What can I say?
That sold two hundred and five thousand and was purchased for one point two million.
No, it's not purchased.
But it's P and S.
There's a P and S.
Purchase option.
It, it's, it was sold at auction at, for two hundred and two thousand five hundred. And then there's by three individual LLCs, so like bottom two, ten, two fourteen, two eighteen. Then there's P and S, a four hundred thousand dollars a lot, um by the LLC who's going to develop. This forty B.
Probably a purchase option, okay.
And so.
So they don't, they don't buy.
I, I didn't read it too carefully, but I just. I suggested that they, you know, look at the numbers because how can, you know, it was, the auction. The paper's actually transferred in January, how can something go up that much in value in a matter of two months? And, you know, when there's no permits or anything like that, so I put, I put stuff like that in the letter, Jim. So.
Probably a purchase option.
So Jim will pick and choose.
Yeah.
What, um, what he puts in the letter to the select board, but. So there's nothing, nothing definitive yet, so no, no forty Bs yet.
What's one seventy-four or sixty-four?
Some, somebody is trying to get a permit to erect a dwelling there, all that remains is a foundation and a deck.
I need a question.
One sixty-four Turner.
It's not Steve's.
No.
He's one forty-seven.
Now, one forty-one Turner was denied, he went to, he went to try to get to under the change. In the sec, that section of the zoning bylaw, that was denied. They also denied three twenty-six central and Hummer two, because nothing was there. This one, just a foundation, it's on a three thousand some odd square foot lot. And a two, so I don't know, that's, it's not our promise, the C B A's.
Yeah, interesting.
So. We, we have enough stuff going on.
I know where that is.
Yeah, yeah, we have enough stuff going on.
Let's see it from the Dallas store.
Yes, yes. I mean, we have nine Laurelwood, um is gonna be finishing in the next two weeks. They're, they're gonna be looking for C M O, um the drainage, I was out there the other day looking at the drainage, the driveways. So ready for hydroseeding, maybe he got it hydroseeding today, um the driveway is going in next week. Um ninety-five Elm is likely to start soon too, as well as three thirty-two C J C. These are all, you know, ninety-five Elm was the common driveway, spill water apartment, three thirty-two C J C is just a. In, internal spill water apartment, but you all know it, a highly visible site. Um, you know, so thi- things are, things have slowed down a little bit, but we are expecting another round of projects in. And um, you know, th- things are always under construction. Is that the point you developed with your account, Karen?
Okay.
Yes, I'm entertaining the motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Ayes.
Thank you, Steph.
Thank you, Steph.